Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the School District of Waukesha Full Board of Education meeting on June 9th, 2021. Please join me and the Pledge of Allegiance to start a meeting.
(inaudible)
So will you please verify that the meeting's been properly posted?
Yes, it has.
Thank you. And can you also take the roll call?
William Baumgart.
Here.
Cory Montiel.
Here.
Greg Dietz.
Here.
Amanda Roddy.
Here.
Kelly Piaszek.
Here.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Here.
Anthony Zenobia.
Here.
Karen Reinacek.
Here.
Joseph Como.
Here. And we are all in attendance. Last day of school. Always a fun day. The most favorite day probably of every child in the school district. Probably the parents too. Well, maybe not. I don't know. It can go both ways. But we made it through the year. And looking forward to having summer. Tonight, we don't have bright lights. But we will start with recognitions. Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources and Compensation Sharon Thiede. Will you do the honors, please?
Okay. Is this on? Yes, thank you. Okay, hi, good evening. So this evening, I would like to present the Employee Recognition Award for June of 2021 to John Burnt. So John, would you please stand up? So John started in the School District of Waukesha in 2008 as the girls' assistant and track and cross-country coach at South. So John's nominators start by saying that John has a stellar reputation among athletes and their families. Above and beyond does not even begin to describe his coaching style and ability. He works a full-time job and commits to countless hours to Waukesha South High School's running program during the running seasons as well as in the offseason. Come to a practice on any given day and you'll find John biking alongside the girls, often darting back and forth between different groups of them as they run around Waukesha. At any meet, you'll find John somewhere along the course or on the side of the track prompting his runners, yelling split times, and providing timely encouragement. He consciously looks for ways to connect individually with his runners. He is known for preparing personalized three-by-five cards for each runner after a competition, including their split times, personal records, and often an inspirational word of encouragement. He does a weekly Player of the Week award he calls Shirt Off My Back, which maybe you've recently heard about that in the news. He finds shirts from running events or colleges or at secondhand stores and awards them to an athlete who has shown particular effort, character, or leadership in the previous week. While not all the shirts were worn by him, they come from his own personal resources of time, effort, and money. The name of the award is fitting because he would give the shirt off his back to anyone who needs it. It is clear that his coaching style is not regulated to just running. His investment in the runners extends beyond the course and the track. He goes to great lengths to seek out family members at meets and always remembers names. He is keenly aware of individual situations and offers his support for whatever is needed. He knows that an athlete's success goes far beyond athletic training, an athletic event, or even athletic career should someone achieve that level of accomplishment. The effort he makes to build character and maturity in the girls is truly life-changing. We have heard many testimonials about this from SDW families. His motto is, "You can always find something to be positive about." So to say he goes the extra mile would be an understatement. Think more along the lines of marathons. So on behalf of the School District of Waukesha, I'd like to congratulate John Burnt on being selected to receive the Employee Recognition Award.
This means a lot to me. I do put in a lot of work to make the girls' experience as good as possible. It has never been about me, so I don't really need the recognition. I appreciate the recognition, but I don't really need it. It has always been about the athlete. And I like to remind myself, it's student-athlete. I want them to do well in the classroom first, foremost, before even worrying about running. And that's why many times I'll ask, "How did exams go today? You know, do you need to work on anything else?" Or that is my priority, student-athlete. But I love my job. I love working with Waukesha School District and the athletes that I've come in contact. Outstanding. So again, thank you very much for this. I appreciate it.
One more minute, John. I'm going to put on my parent hat right now. John, you became a coach when my oldest daughter, I think, was a junior. And Laura. And you coached both Laura and Angela. And everything that was said by Sharon and how you presented yourself is 100% true. And it lasts. Your impact has had a huge lasting effect on my daughters and who they are today. Not just on, you know, their life. They love running, and that's a lifelong sport that they can do as long as they stay healthy. But you really helped influence them in many ways to shape who they are. And I think you know that because I think a lot of your athletes, including my daughters, stay in touch with you, come back and share stories. And, you know, my youngest daughter Angela just had her first child, and you know that. You know that before most people. You know, and there's a reason for that. You connect really well with those student-athletes. And so just your humble approach is just amazing. Your kindness and your love for people is fantastic. I hope you can do this as long as you want to for many, many years to come, John. You really deserve this. Congratulations.
Thank you, Trev.
Now you got to get to South, right?
He's in the middle of the banquet, it's right now. We got to get to the banquet.
Thank you again.
Well deserved. Well deserved. Tonight, we do not have a report from our student representatives. They want to start summer. But we are at the section of our meeting where there's an opportunity for our citizens to speak. As has been past practice, we'll limit the discussion point or the time to three minutes. And at the two-and-a-half-minute mark, Amanda will give you a signal. And if you could wrap up your comments in the remaining 30 seconds, that's much appreciated. We expect all speakers to honor the time limit, refrain from using any inappropriate language in any manner, and be respectful in their comments. Speakers who do not meet these expectations may be prohibited from speaking at future Board of Education meetings. We also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and the Board of Education, refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering, applause, or other behavior that will detract from the meeting. Also, in order to respect our speakers and meeting participants, please silence your phones at this time if you have not done so already. We do have three people signed up tonight. We'll start with Stacy Keen, followed by Mike Walsh. Welcome, Stacy.
Hi. Good evening. And I want to start by thanking the five board members for what you have done for our children in this last month. It has been amazing to see smiles, maskless prom, pictures on Facebook, events, sports, and just normalcy. It's been really amazing, so thank you. What made all the hard work worth it for me were the messages sent to me from happy parents and teachers who were afraid to speak out publicly. It made a positive difference for most of the student population. Those four weeks mattered when some thought it wouldn't. So thank you Cory, Patrick, Anthony, Kelly, and Karen. The five of you are true superstars. There's currently only one case out of 14,000 students and staff. The five of you followed the science and made the end of the school year amazing, so thank you. I also want to say that I'm not going away. The indoctrination of our children is real, and you all need to be held accountable. I will be there watching every move. We have sent emails of things we have uncovered already and expect action to be taken. What happened in 10th grade English, which we spoke about last month, is unacceptable. Teachers showing their hatred for America is unacceptable. Being disrespectful during the pledge is unacceptable. Teaching that the American Revolution is the most boring revolution and it was just a bunch of white guys out for their financial gain is unacceptable. What in the world is being allowed in our American classrooms? Rich white men is listed first in these history notes. Democracy is listed third. It is things like this and the information we have sent to you that teach our children to hate America instead of love what is great about it and learn from where it went wrong. It all should be taught, the good, the bad, and the ugly. Students need to know all of these things. But to tell students that the American Revolution is my least favorite revolution in the world and it was just a bunch of white guys out for their financial gain is taking it too far. Oh, and by the way, in Waukesha history classes, we don't call it the American Revolution anymore. We call it the North American Revolution. That's a new one for me.
30 seconds.
Next, our district policy allows teachers to express their political beliefs and opinions. It states that they can do this only after the students can share their opinions to allow critical thinking. My question for all of you, how is this monitored? Is someone sitting in these classrooms every day? Are there cameras in our classrooms? What is happening? There's no way this can be policed. No way. Instead, this policy is broken every day, and I can provide examples every day of it. The last time I checked, my American tax dollars pay your salaries and the teacher's salaries.
Thank you, Stacy. We appreciate it. Mike Walsh, followed by Keith Best.
Good evening, everyone. Mike Walsh, 2412 West Row Lane. It's really nice to see all your faces. I didn't know what you guys looked like until this time. So I know it's not on the agenda tonight, but you guys actually are allowing in the schools CLR training from Dr. Sherek Holly. It's actually just thinly veiled critical race theory. There's things inside there that, by the way, you guys are all white except for one. I don't like to point that out to you guys. So this is all against you, okay? It's against me. It's against my family. I've trained my son to not be ashamed of his whiteness. I've also talked to people that are not white, people of color, and told them not to be ashamed of theirs. We're trying to make people hate each other. We're making them hate each other in our schools. We're making people hate America. This is terrible, okay? I used to have a man-hating teacher in the 10th grade. She used to kick me out every day because, you know, because I spoke up for my beliefs. 2020 and 2021, a lot of people think were a bad year. I think it's a great year. The last two years are going to be the saving salvation of America because this has been coming for many, many years. We're exposing America of the hating, the victim-creating, the race-baiting Woktopians. It's the area, we're in the era now of people saying, "You can't say that anymore. I can't stand that when I hear that because of cancel culture. It keeps coming for you." You can't cancel me, by the way. I don't go anywhere. You know, if you don't accept that there's 72 genders, you're an intolerant bigot now. The hell, men and women, that's it. That's all I'm going to do. I won't play your silly little games for anybody that wants to play that. If you don't accept my beliefs, by the way, you're the intolerant one when people say that. They call me intolerant, they're intolerant as soon as they don't believe that I believe what I want to believe. You know, I believe that we used to learn about our neighbors by asking them, you know, when they aren't of the same culture as me, that it was actually cultural appreciation. Today, that's become cultural appropriation, right? Now it's racist to ask your neighbors and people of color, you know, something about their culture. That's how we learn about each other. This is the melting pot country, for God's sakes, right? And now we're telling people to hate it. Hate this country. Hate the white man. I didn't do anything to these people. You didn't do anything to these people. You know what? Dr. Martin Luther King got assassinated for things that he would be rolling over finding out what's going on in today's system. You have a chance to stop it. You have a chance to go in there and pull it out of our curriculum. This, I hear that there's a video for 7th graders in Butler that are watching about gay sex and anal sex. Yeah, okay. You know what? They're going to learn about it.
30 seconds.
You don't need to learn about it in 7th grade that gay anal sex creates AIDS. What are we doing? Where are we going? This is not where America's values are based on, right? We need to take it back. You have a chance to do it now. I know it's not on the agenda, but one of you's got to find the strength to put it on the future agenda and get America back in the schools and put American pride and quit creating victims.
Thank you, Mike. And Keith.
Good evening, everyone. I appreciate the fact that I can stand here and address you tonight since, in reality, you all work for us. And I would like to tell you that I believe in free speech. I believe in the First Amendment. And I'm so thankful that I can let you know that. You might not agree with me, but I have the opportunity to tell you what I think. There's somebody in this room here that doesn't have that opportunity. He's been coming to these meetings for a long time, and he cares about children just as much, if not more, than all of you on the board. Mr. Reese here should be able to speak at these meetings. I don't care if you agree with him or not. I'm standing up for Paul. Now, as a former, as a parent of children that went through the entire school district here from K through 12, I know things were a lot different than they are now. I'd like to see them go back to the way they were for fairness and open dialogue without this indoctrination that seems to be going on in the classrooms these days. So the last thing I want to say is, my grandchildren are now members of the Waukesha School District, and I'm deeply concerned for them. And I'm going to be watching with the rest of my family to see how this continues. And I told my sons, if it comes to it, I will help finance pulling our children, your children and my grandchildren, out of the school district in Waukesha and have them go to a private school. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Okay, moving on to our minute approval, there are a couple minutes that require approval. We had our regular Board of Education meeting on May 12th, 2021, and we also had an executive session to, for an expulsion panel on May 13th. Do I happen to have a motion for approval? Ms. Montiel?
I move to approve the May 12 and May 13, 2021 minutes as presented.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Given by Amanda. Any modifications, discussion? Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Kelly Piaszek.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes nine zero, Sue. Moving on to communications, we're going to start with Dr. Seibert.
Thank you, Mr. Como. Tonight, I have the privilege of announcing our high school scholar athletes from the Classic Eight Conference. And these are student-athletes who have achieved a cumulative grade point average of 3.5. They are multiple-sport athletes who have participated in their senior year and also have no athletic code violations. So we'll start with the list from Waukesha North. We have Jace Acker, Allison Radizak, Caleb Brower, Aubrey, oh, excuse me, Aubrey Durham, Luke Selberg, Erica Sweet, Clayton Schwalby, Kelly McIntyre, Thomas Demo, and Olivia Osborn. At Waukesha South, we have Clara Jo Kreitlow, Malia Herrera, Preston Bauer, Reagan Mulder, Calvin Primo, Ashley George, Ethan Ladd, Owen Van Galen, Ezekiel Diaz, and Soleil Welty. And at Waukesha West High School, we have Alec Boland, Nick Bristol, Colby Griesar, Kelvin Hanke, Travis Hietry, Nick Klar, Jordan Kreisler, Tate Peters, Catherine Reskey, and Shayla Walzac. So a number of students are being recognized by the Classic Eight, and so congratulations to all of those students and their families, as well as their coaches.
That's fantastic.
Yes, long list.
Do you have anything else?
That'll do it.
Thank you. And Cory, Mr. Montiel, did we have a Waukesha Education Foundation meeting this month?
We do, or we did, Mr. President. And I have a report.
Excellent.
Thank you. The Waukesha Education Foundation, or commonly known as WEF, has been extremely busy. Scholarship nights were held by WEF at all three high schools on May 19th. The foundation was extremely pleased to award $29,225 in scholarships to 43 deserving seniors from the school district of Waukesha. Reminder that the current scholarship fund is now available. It's a fantastic opportunity for individuals and organizations to leave a legacy of support for our students and their future. If interested in starting your own, excuse me, if you're interested in starting your own scholarship, please contact WEF Director Lynette Kelmage or me directly. Grants Day was a huge success. WEF awarded 24 grants totaling more than $35,000, impacting 13 schools and the Horwitz-Dremer Planetarium. 10 board members and committee members assisted in the deliveries. The Partners in Education event will be held at the Morningstar Golfers Club on the patio at 5:00 PM on July 21, 2021. Board members are encouraged, if not told, to attend. Invitations are in your inbox. Please make sure you are as VP because we need to schedule, and the event is free. The WEF Golf Oding will be held at the Western Lakes Country Club on August 4th, 2021. All golf spots are sold out, and a waiting list has been started. Dinner tickets remain available. There are also sponsorship opportunities still available for both dinner and the green sponsors. The Evening for Education will be held at the Merritt Hotel on October 21, 2021. This is a dinner gala event and is a full evening of celebrating all of the great, all that is great about Waukesha schools, as well as honoring the community partners, corporate partners, and someone that has greatly impacted education in our district. This is one of WEF's largest events each year. Sponsorships are available, and tickets will go on sale this summer. For information about the golf outing and the Evening for Education, visit waukeshaeducationfoundation.org. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Montiel. Always a good group, right? Fantastic. Productive meetings, and they do a lot.
They are.
Yes, thank you. Moving on to our charter school and program report, given by Mr. Baumgart.
Yes, I'm going to comment on just one event this evening. It is a combination of the Engineering and the Health Academy, WAHP. On June 3rd, our seniors presented their capstone projects. The two academies collaborated on these projects, forming an excellent combination of the needs and solutions. I can only say I was impressed and thrilled at this event. These young people demonstrated their abilities to think out of the box. And I know that's a cliche, but it just fit perfectly this time. Think out of the box and then go forward and develop a solution. And very typically, what happened is an idea was dreamt up by the Health Academy that they would not be able to solve physically, and the engineers would be able to work on that. So, and visiting with those kids that night was just marvelous because they just were so sharp in presenting and coming up with great ideas. So we are doing very good things.
It's fantastic to witness that. Isn't it fun to witness that?
Yeah, it was very much fun.
Yeah.
Okay, that's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Baumgart. Moving on to our consent agenda, we'll begin with Darren Clark. I see we do have a number of gifts. This might be a new record total.
Yeah, there's quite a few here. Waukesha South received five gifts. Four of these were for their high school football team. $500 was from S&amp;G Partnership, $1,000 from Robert and Linda Cox, $1,000 from Eric and Catherine Sudle, $15 from Brian and Laura Manett. The fifth was $1,200 from Waukesha All City to be used for project graduation. Waukesha North High School received $10,000 from an anonymous donor to be used for Avid and Project Graduation per donor request. Waukesha West received $2,500 from an anonymous donor for facility or equipment upgrades for West Baseball based on the needs to be determined by Coach Montez and Athletic Director Kyle Lemieux. Waukesha High School received an in-kind gift of roughly $3,500 from Weldall. As part of the MAID partnership, Weldall continues contributing in-kind in welding, gas, wire, helmets, gloves, metal, et cetera, to be used in the metal fabrication classes. Les Paul received $4,851.50 in matching funds from Paul and Kathleen Olman to be used for technology to inspire students. Woodyar Elementary received $1,200 from Nicole Holland and friends to purchase T-shirts for all the 21, 22. And the Planetarium received $1,000 from Urethane Systems Plus Inc. to be used for improvements to the DigiStar system and lobby remodel.
That's unbelievable generosity. Just, I think I did some quick math, it was like over $27,000. Just what a fantastic community that we live in, and you have that kind of giving that's going on. It's fantastic. Thank you for those gifts. It makes a difference. It makes a huge difference. Your consent agenda includes various categories for approval. Included in the items for approval are decisions of the expulsion panel, which met on May 13th, a confidential communication regarding the details of the expulsion was in your Friday packet, along with minutes included under item number 1H. If any board member wishes to discuss this item, we do have a, an executive session scheduled potentially at the end of our meeting and the open part of our meeting. And the approval of the consent agenda confirms the full board agreement with the expulsion panel. At this time, does anyone like to have the expulsion or any other item on the consent agenda set aside for different, for separate consideration? Okay, Ms. Roddy, would you please present the consent agenda for approval?
Mr. President, earlier this evening, the Human Resource and Compensation Committee approved of 20 resignations, one retirement, and 19 new or modified teacher contracts. This information was provided in your packet, and an addendum was placed at your desk. I move that the consent agenda be approved as amended.
Is there a second to that? Given by Mr. Baumgart? Discussion? It's Dr. Piaszek.
I just have a question. There were 18 resignations on the original list and three on the addendum, so, and you said 20. I just want to clarify if we're missing one?
It's new math. No, I'm sorry.
Don't get me started.
We got to be lighthearted sometime, right?
One was a retirement. That's, so that's how the math adds up then.
Oh, so it's 20. Let's be clear on the numbers.
20 resignations, one retirement.
Okay.
Is 21.
Thanks for that clarification. Any other discussion, comments? Okay, Sue, will you please take the roll call vote?
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Cory Montiel.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Kelly Piaszek.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes nine zero, Sue. Thank you, Ms. Roddy.
Thank you.
Moving on to the superintendent's report given by Dr. Seibert.
All right, thank you, Mr. Como. Tonight, I'd simply like to take a little time to be grateful and reflective as we wrap up this school year. And it's undoubtedly been certainly one of the most, if not the most, challenging school years that any of us have ever been through, but we've persevered through it together. And I certainly want to recognize our teachers and staff. They deserve incredible recognition for their hard work and the amount of flexibility that they displayed throughout this entire school year. Our kids and families deserve to be recognized as well for their partnership with us and the many adjustments that they needed to make throughout the year, and we appreciate that. Our principals, our administrators, and our cabinet deserve our thanks as well for their leadership through many times of uncertainty. And you certainly, as a board, deserve recognition for your support of all of us and walking the path of the 2021, 2020, 2021 school year with us. There were many difficult decisions, and together we found our way through it. The school year ended today, as you know, and now we take a deep breath quickly and we start planning for the 21, 22 school year. And that's going to be a school year that promises to be better and feel much different. But before then, I certainly want to wish all of our staff, our kids, our families, a safe and relaxing summer, and I wish you the same as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgart.
Okay, moving on to the portion of our meeting where we have our committees report out. That's where the heavy lifting gets done, a lot of the detailed work, and then that gets presented up to us at the full board meeting. We do rotate what committees report out first, and this time up first. We do rotate what committees report out first, and this time up first is our Technology Committee, but there is no report tonight on that. And you'll see that we're changing the structure a little bit. Moving on to our Finance and Facilities Committee, given by Mr. McCaffrey.
I have five action items and two discussion items on the agenda this evening. The first action item is approval of CISA contract for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year. The committee was presented the renewal of the CISA contract for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year. CISA has provided the district with support in teaching and learning, special education, at-risk, Title I, and parent education for many years. Waukesha has been well-served by programs provided, and we look forward to continuing to participate in this cooperative effort. I move for approval of the CISA one, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two contract as presented.
Is there a second to that? Same by Ms. Reinacek? We've partnered with CISA for many years. There's some, there's some services that do not make sense for us to actually staff for, and those are the ones that we partner with CISA for. They've done an excellent job over the years, and it's been a good, it's been a good, it's been a good partnership. So, I think this is, this will carry on a tradition that has really helped our district to move forward and to save money, quite frankly, and to serve some students who have some very unique needs. Any other, yes, Ms. Dr. Piesek.
Question of clarification. Are there, are there add-on items that we have to consider over the course of the school year? And with the motion to approve at the exact amount, is that something that we need to discuss?
Dr. Cook, you want to take that?
Okay. That is the estimated start of the next school year. There, from time to time, is the purchase of an additional seat in one of the alternative programs that they offer, but that's on an as-needed individual-student basis as the school year goes forward.
Do we contract for that separately, or would we need to come back and address this again?
Once the contract is approved, as long as we're buying into those programs, we have not had to come back. It's more of an agency agreement that's signed by Dr. Seibert or myself, and then the CISA administrator.
We did not put a dollar amount on the motion, if that's what you're asking. We're approving the contract, not a dollar amount. We give the administration the leeway in case something pops up where we can't get back.
Thank you.
And on the other side, sometimes we don't use all the services, too. Usually we do, but, so, that flexibility, I think, helps. Yes, Dr. Piesek.
Ask one more question. Maybe Mr. Clark knows the answer. Did, did we overspend our estimate this past year or under?
There may have been one addendum or add addition, but that might have been the previous school year. This year is targeted. I wouldn't be surprised if we didn't use them all because of the different platforms we were in and switching, but it's not unusual to have small adds. They're never, on a percentage basis of dollars, if you want to measure it that way, they're never large.
I know, I kind of put you on the spot. I was just curious if we had a general trend.
And just, just to clarify, we do utilize those seats. The seat costs are the ones that are the most expensive on that contract. We do utilize all of those seats. We may not start on September one with all of them, but in order for the program to be available, we do have to buy in on the front end, but usually by October, November, we have a kid in that seat.
Now, the questions, discussion? Okay, Sue, will you please take the roll call vote for the approval of the CISA contract for twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two?
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Kelly Piesek.
Aye.
Corey Montiel.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek. Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes nine zero, Sue. Patrick?
All right, thank you, Joe. My second action item is the approval of the E-Achieve four-year-old kindergarten charter agreement. This year, our SDW virtual option had one-hundred-and-twenty students enrolled in the four-year-old kindergarten class. Because of this high level of interest and wanting to serve our community better, the administration recommended the creation of an E-Achieve 4K program. I move for approval of the E-Achieve four-year-old kindergarten charter agreement as presented.
Is there a second to that? Same by Mr. Dietz? Yeah, this is, this is a fantastic, I think, expansion. I think one of the things that probably is not a well-kept secret is, is if you can get students earlier on, you can try and keep them in the program longer. And that's just the competitive world that we live in, and E-Achieve has done an excellent, excellent job. And I remember when we started this charter school and how it's grown and how it's evolved, and it's really good to see us serving the youngest, potentially the youngest, students. So, it's fantastic. Any other discussion or questions? Sue, take the roll call vote, please.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Kelly Piesek.
Aye.
Corey Montiel.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek. Greg Dietz.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes nine zero. Patrick?
All right, thank you, Mr. Como. My third action item is approval of Southeast Wisconsin Schools Alliance contract. The committee was presented the renewal of the Southeastern Wisconsin School Alliance contract for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year, which provides legislative council regarding matters of mutual interest with other districts in our region. The committee approved the SWSA contract as presented, and I so move.
Is there a second to that? Same by Mrs. Reinacek? Discussion?
A question.
Yes.
Patrick, or, we've been staying at about the same amount of money every year on that. Is that changing here or not?
It's the same.
Same, same old, same old? Okay, thank you.
Yep. Not a lot of overhead.
Any other questions? Discussion? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote on approving the Southeast Wisconsin School Alliance contract.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Kelly Piesek.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Corey Montiel.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes nine zero, Sue.
Thank you for the time, Mr. President. My fourth action item is the approval of the National School Lunch Program. We currently, we are currently providing free meals for all children under the Summer Food Service Program with waivers provided by the USDA. We have the option of choosing to continue using these waivers through twenty-twenty-two school year or returning to the National School Lunch Program, which uses an application process to provide free and reduced meals. The committee approved the return to the National School Lunch Program and School Breakfast Program for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year, and I so move.
Is there a second to that? Same by Mrs. Reinacek? Discussion? Mr. Montiel?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. There was actually quite a bit of discussion at this committee meeting. I know you were there as well. There was discussion about whether our students are best served with having all free meals through the feds or going back to this National School Lunch Program. There was some discussion to make sure children were not falling through the cracks, that there are procedures in place about every kid gets a meal. Ms. Thede, I believe, gave us some good information about, I think it was her, I apologize, about how that works. So, yeah, I have no problem going back to it. I think when people may look at this and say, why should we not just take free lunches for everybody? We don't need to do that anymore, in my opinion, and what we're reverting back to, I think, is the right decision. So, it was pretty detailed. People have questions, they can just watch the committee meeting. Yep, yeah.
Yeah, essentially, we're going back to the pre-COVID times. With what we, with what we have done in the past, those programs have been successful in identifying and supporting the families that need, need the support. Other discussion or comments? Dr. Piesek.
I was able to hear the discussion at the committee as well, and I really want to thank the committee for getting into such detail on that. It was very helpful. I wanted to simply clarify that this, if we return to the summer, the, sorry.
National School Lunch Program.
The National School Lunch Program. The seamless summer option, the summer pickup that happened last year is not going to happen this year. That's removing.
We're not removing it. That is, continues under current. This is for the school year.
I brought this up at the last board meeting, but one of the things that I've been informed by community members who've kind of observed that process is that there was a lot of waste. There were a lot of large bags of food. It was take what you can because we can't get rid of all of it, and I'd just like to ask that we could do something to ensure that either the unused food is going to people who, who need it or that it's not going to waste. I'm not sure if we, if we get it, if we just get what we get or if we, you know, deploy it and then we get reimbursed for it, but there seems to be a considerable amount of waste with that program that I just like to pay attention to.
Mr. Clark, would you like to comment on that?
Yeah, one of the things that, and I heard the same concern, and one of the things, at least at the front end of all this, is we had no idea what the quantities were going to be. You always had to walk that line of running out versus, and quite honestly, the numbers really never stabilized, so we were always kind of chasing expected number. But I would agree, in terms of efficiency, the mechanism to allow us to get accurate counts where in a school, you tend to learn the trends of meals and all that. So, that's just one, one response to that, but it's a fair comment, I think.
One of the other things that was discussed or was pointed out during our discussion at Finance and Facilities is that some volunteer organizations use the Free and Reduced Lunch Program as kind of a gateway, sort of a screening criteria to help them to operate their organizations. And there was some support by some of those groups in our community to return back to the pre-COVID times to essentially help them. So, that's kind of like, I wouldn't say that that would be a driving factor in the decision that we made, but I think it's a, it's a side benefit, if you, if you wish. Mrs. Reinacek?
Thank you. Going back to what Dr. Piesek said, we have, if there are extra lunches, is it kind of like you'd hear from fast food places where they have to throw it in the dumpster because it's been so long? Or else they could get sued if someone got sick, if they did give it to the homeless? Have an extra fifty meals each day or fifty and then twenty-five instead of giving two a few in the end and then throwing the rest in the garbage? Can we give those to the food pantry? Or can we give them away? Are they hot and they're going to go bad in a certain amount of time? Or if it's cold and it's like cold cuts on a sandwich, is it, is there a law that we have to abide by where it has to go to our children?
I'd ask for some time. There's a lot of federal regulations tied to all this, so I'd hate to give you an answer that I'm not sure on, but I wouldn't be surprised if there is some rules on that, but I don't know, and I can, maybe in the next Friday update, provide a response to that if that's fine with the board.
Okay. Any other discussion or comments? Mr. Dietz?
I assume that the summer program is available to all students in the district, not just students that attend the School District of Waukesha?
That'll run through August thirty-first of the summer.
So, that might let itself to not having an accurate count or an accurate estimate if?
I think we'll always struggle with the count.
Right. Because it's not that they can preregister.
Yeah, you know, it's not like you sign up for.
Okay, Dr. Piesek?
The way that that summer program has been communicated, and other schools, I think, did the same, it was not just limited to even students in the district. It was literally anyone. You didn't have to show proof of residence. You didn't, and I think that was part of the concern and part of the problem was, it was not only unpredictable, but not necessarily being used the way I think it was intended.
Ms. Roddy?
Yes. Maybe to answer Ms. Reinacek and Dr. Piesek's concern about the leftover waste, last, I can't remember if it was spring or summertime, my family utilized the resources there at Hawthorne. We used it as our excuse to go to the house and walk. But they actually had shut down their site because the numbers were low. So, I agree with Mr. Clark. I don't know that they're going to get accurate, but they were noticing that the numbers were declining, so they were trying to eliminate that, the waste of resources in that way. So, if that helps at all.
We also, just to kind of round out this conversation, we didn't have it at every site to begin with because we didn't think the numbers would be there, so tried to be as efficient as possible, but perfect, certainly.
Are there questions or comments? Mr. Montiel?
Thank you. Just a clarification. So, you're going to let us know, if possible, what, if anything, we can do with the extra food? Okay. I could circle back with the food pantry and see if there's anything there.
All right. Sue, will you please read back the motion, just so that we're clear?
The committee approved the return to the National School Lunch Program and School Breakfast Program for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year.
Okay. Why don't you take the roll call vote?
Kelly Piesek.
Aye.
Corey Montiel.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes nine zero. Patrick?
Thank you, Mr. Como. My fifth and final action item is the approval of Les Paul Cafeteria name change. Theodore Yeoman was an influential journalist and women's rights advocate that lived on what is now the Les Paul Middle School Campus. She promoted civic reform in Waukesha, led social reform statewide, and played a national role in the success of the Nineteenth Amendment. Following Board Policy number seventy-two fifty, the Les Paul Site Council has recommended the naming the Les Paul Cafeteria after Ms. Yeoman. Per Board Policy, naming of facilities requires two readings. The Board heard the first reading last month. I move to approve the naming of the Les Paul Cafeteria to the Theodore Yeoman Cafeteria.
Is there a second on that?
I'll second.
Same by Mr. Montiel? Yes, Mr. Baumgart?
Just a, just a question. I'm not sure who will be able to answer it. What kind of response did we get from the people at Les Paul to this idea?
Dr. Seibert, do you want to comment on? You were on the committee, and there were others, too?
Yes, Mr. Clark and I were part of the committee, and then Mr. Bennett had, we had representatives from Les Paul and the community in our first meeting, and then there was another meeting where Mr. Bennett and some of those community members talked with the staff at Les Paul, and they were very excited about the idea and very receptive.
Mr. Dietz?
Is there any connection with extended family members so that they're aware of the change or the, the name change?
We do have a name of a distant relative that we are working to track down. We just have the name, and so we're trying to find a phone number and an email, and yes, so we do have one.
Other questions or comments? Dr. Piesek?
Just one brief comment. I just want to give a call out to Mrs. Voight, who I know is very passionate about this decision and very supportive of it and a huge advocate for it and worked very hard, so credit to her as well.
All right. Any other discussion, comments, questions? Okay, Sue, why don't you take the roll call vote on naming the Les Paul Cafeteria after Ms. Yeoman?
And Baumgart.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye.
Cory Montiel.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes nine zero. Patrick?
Thank you, Mr. Como. I have two discussion information items on the agenda. The first is a monthly budget report. Revenues and expenditures continue to be within budgeted limits for both the general and the special education fund. The district is operating in accordance with our approved budget and all other funds as well. Are there any questions on the budget? All right, moving on. My second discussion information item is the 2021-2022 budget development. The committee was updated on the status of the 2021-2022 budget development. Two scenarios were provided, highlighting the difference per member aid will make in our funding. Assuming our per pupil and state aid remain flat, with an increase of $150 per member, we are only looking at an increase of $36,000. This is due to the declining enrollment exemption. At a flat per-member rate, we have a $2.5 million exemption. With the increase of $150 per member, our exemption drops to $800,000. As we continue with the 2021-2022 budget development process, we will present the most current information we have. Any questions on budget development? All righty. Our next meeting is July 5th at 5:30 in the boardroom. And Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. McCaffrey. Moving on to teaching and learning, given by Mr. Dietz.
Thank you, Mr. President. The last Teaching and Learning Committee meeting was held on June 1, 2021, at 6:00 PM here in the boardroom. Two discussion information items appear on the agenda for teaching and learning this evening. Our first discussion information item was the Woody Year Achievement Gap Reduction (AGR) grant update. One of the requirements of the Achievement Gap Reduction Grant is to present twice a year to the Board of Education on how the grant is being implemented. Woody Year Principal Brandy Hart shared the strategy chosen to reduce the achievement gap, which is small classroom sizes, 18 students or less, in grades kindergarten through third. She also shared the current achievement data for students at the identified grade levels. Next year, Woody Year plans to use a combination of strategies. So in addition to small class sizes, they have hired an AGR instructional coach that will work closely with teachers as well as small group students in interventions for them. So they'll be doing a two-pronged approach next year instead of just the classroom reduction.
Any discussion or comments on this? Okay, quick.
Our second discussion information item was school-based mental health update. Luke Pinion, our Director of Student Services, and Laura Sharone from Family Service and a community mental health provider, partner, provided an update on the continued expansion of school-based mental health services throughout all of our school buildings. Specifically, the PATH, or Providing Access to Healing Program, was highlighted, which positions licensed psychotherapists and community mental health providers in our schools under various models and services. Additionally, Luke presented information about various grant funding that our district has applied for and been awarded over the last four years, which has supported the growth of PATH programs across our system. Luke's presentation was included in your board packet last week.
Any discussion, comments, questions on this? I just want to say that the relationship that we have with our private partners, it's fantastic. Much of the change has happened under the leadership of Dr. Cook. I had mentioned at our committee meeting how difficult it was back in the mid-2005, maybe 2004, 2005, where we had essentially went from 16, I think it was 16, maybe 17 elementary counselors, down to one. You remember that, Melon?
None of the numbers, it was bad.
Yeah, yeah. And eventually, over time, what we built up was a group of psychologists and sociologists, or social workers, to really help with the mental health of our students. And we built up the counselors, too, a little bit in that time period. Do you want to talk through some of those major changes, Dr. Cook? They're very significant.
Sure, yeah. We did, over time, get to the point where we do have one school psychologist placed at all of our elementary schools. So that is essentially a replacement and addition over time. We have increased our school counseling staff, particularly at the elementary. We're at two and a half counselors there. So when you take the psychologist plus the school counselor, you know, you're increasing that social and emotional support, mental health support in the school for the kids. And then on top of that, we have a number of social workers that work across our elementary schools to provide support to students. That does continue up through middle and high school, where we have a team at each of our buildings to serve kids. The remarkable work that we've done, and it goes back now, I think, about seven or eight years around this PATH program that started out with just a couple of schools and now is all of our schools, plus the grant writing that supports this evolution in our system, is nearly $350,000 in grants that we've qualified for in the last, I want to say, three or four years, which has really added to the supports that we've been able to provide kids. That licensed psychotherapist, the counseling on-site for kids has been, I think, one of the biggest additions we've been able to make.
We did our best back prior to having these resources, but there was definitely needs that weren't being met, I think. And so as, you know, your team has, you know, gone over the years in terms of improving the services, appreciate your leadership there, Dr. Cook, and your team.
We have a fantastic team. Yeah, our psychologists, social workers, and counselors are second to none. Luke and the work that he's done, the partnerships that we've had with Teaching and Learning around grant writing, particularly around the United Way, and some of the title funds to make sure that we're dealing with the social and emotional learning. You know, as you saw in that presentation, this is, you know, we have a sliver of it, which is the mental health piece, but we do a lot of work to try to prevent the need of mental health and the bullying and such like that in our schools. So we do a lot of work in this area in our district. We have a ton to be proud of, and we've got very, very good staff working in this area.
Thanks to all of those on your team. Appreciate it. And our private partners. Fantastic.
And Dr. Cook, I mean, it's very clear to those of us that were at the meeting that the mental health services that the School District of Waukesha provides are students, and also a resource for staff, by the way, is well-known throughout the state. And I would say Waukesha is, you know, one of the top leaders of providing mental health of any district in Wisconsin.
Yeah, we do get outreach as to how we've done it, and we do a number of presentations on a statewide level around it. And we can't thank Family Services enough. They've been a great partner from day one, going back, you know, seven, eight years now. They've supported us along the way, provided us guidance, provided our teachers professional development in this. They've helped with our trauma-informed care initiatives in our district. So they've done a lot of work to help us. You know, I know that a lot of attention has come on this because of the pandemic, but we did a lot of work prior to that because we saw a need and we were trying to address it.
Right. And even though we're, you know, at that high a level of success, there are still kids on a waiting list.
Correct.
There are still kids in our district that need to be serviced, so more work still needs to be done, but I have no reason to believe that you guys won't address that.
We're going to continue to pursue it. Yep.
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes the Teaching and Learning Committee report for this evening. Our next meeting will be held on Tuesday, July 6, 2021, at 6:00 PM here in the boardroom.
Thank you, Mr. Dietz. Moving on to our Government Relations Committee, given by Ms. Reinacek.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Government Relations Committee met this morning, and we had four discussion and information items. Dr. Seibert reviewed the 2021-2023 School District of Waukesha Legislative Priorities Document. The Government Relations Committee crafted this statement in March, and it was later approved by the full board. It has been shared with our local legislators and the Joint Finance Commission. Next, the 2021-23 State Biennial Budget Update. Mr. Clark provided an update on the 2021-23 State Biennial Budget. He described what Governor Evers proposed and what the Joint Finance Commission has put forward as well. He compared and contracted the two to provide the committee with an in-depth look at the overall state budget process, which will likely continue through the summer.
These are discussion items, if anyone has comments or questions on them? Yeah, Mr. Clark?
I sent out an email earlier today that the information I shared on Monday and then this morning is already somewhat out of date, so bear with us as we respond.
Changes quickly, I guess.
We're doing it all in pencil now, so we can...
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Next, the goals for the Government Relations Committee. The committee members had a robust discussion on goals for the future of the committee. A number of ideas were shared, including more and regular interaction and relationship building with legislators and elected officials, inviting these individuals into our schools and district to see all that the School District of Waukesha has to offer. Dr. Seibert and I will formalize the committee goals this summer. And last, the summer legislative contact and connections. Dr. Seibert will be reaching out to our local legislators and planning summer opportunities for connection and contact. Our committee members and Mr. Clark will be invited to join these meetings as we build deeper relationships and connections. Our next meeting will be on Wednesday, September 8 at 9:00 AM. Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Reinacek. Safety and security, we don't have a report on that this month. Moving on to Human Resources and Compensation Committee, given by Ms. Rady.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. We have no action items for approval this evening, and we also have no information or discussion items this evening to report. Our next meeting will be Wednesday, July 7 at 6:15 in Room 109.
Okay, thank you. And moving on to policy, given by Mr. Baumgart.
Yes, thank you. This evening, we have four action items, and in a way, they're kind of connected, but we'll go through that in a minute, and one discussion item. The four action items that we have on the agenda were approved by the Policy Committee last month and need approval by the full board. Each of the four policies are connected to the changes in board committees and the policy approval process that we will be using. A summary of the revisions to the policies are listed in board docs. The first policy is Policy 0131.1, Bylaws and Policies. This policy is revised to change how bylaws and policy updates and revisions are approved. Policy updates and revisions will be approved by the Policy Committee and forward to the full board to be approved as part of the consent agenda. And that's where one of our big changes is that we're going to be using the consent agenda approach that we've used previously in FNF on those things that really don't need a lot of discussion, just to kind of expedite the process. Newly proposed policies, on the other hand, will first be approved by the Policy Committee and then considered for approval by the full board at the subsequent meeting of the full board. At this point, I would like to move for approval of Policy 0131.1, Bylaws and Policies, as I presented.
Is there a second to that? Dr. Piasik? Discussion?
I think I'll just add to that. Quite simply, we were looking, in some cases, we were bringing a lot of stuff to the board, which was kind of an eraser kind of a thing, rubber stamping or whatever the word are. And we're trying to just expedite a little bit because we get so many of these coming through.
But it does not, so we still can, though, as a board member, if we feel that one of those policies, even though it might just be a technical change required by the federal government or whatever.
We may bring it to the board instead, and that's what we would do.
Yep, so we would break that out during the consent agenda portion, and we could have a discussion on that, on whichever policy people would want to talk on. So we still have the ability to do that.
That even could happen at the Policy Committee level, that we decide we need to bring it to that point.
In all new, all new, let's be clear in this, all new policy will follow the process that we have in place.
That is correct.
Okay. Other questions, comments on this? Sue, will you please take the roll call vote?
Cory Montiel.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes nine zero, Sue. Bill?
Thank you. The second one is a revision to Policy 0155 Committees. This policy is revised to reflect the changes made this year to the board committees with the elimination of the Safety and Security Committee and the Technology Committee. I move for approval of Policy 0155 Committees as presented.
Is there a second to that? Saying by Ms. Reinacek? Discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
I'm sorry I didn't bring this up earlier, but did we ever have in the policy, how many members are part of the committees? I mean, how is that determined?
Oh, I'm glad you asked the question, because one of our decisions in moving into the consent agenda concept is we've gone to a five-policy member, five-member policy at committee level.
At the committee level. But I notice it wasn't in the policy. I was just wondering, was it ever, and then do we have to, according to the policy, meet to change that member, or is it the purview of the president?
I believe it's the president.
I think, I don't know if it actually is mentioned in the policy.
It's not in the policy. That's why I was just wondering, was it ever in the policy? And did it switch from, went to may or may not?
We never had the number of members on the committee in policy. That was always up to the board president to assign them.
Thank you for asking the question, Patrick.
Mr. Dietz?
Even though the Technology Committee won't meet separately, agenda items for that, that would have been for that committee, will be interwoven into teaching and learning. So it's not that we're getting rid of that totally, but we'll just combine it with teaching and learning.
Right. And the safety and security will be primarily FNF, be ruled into FNF. However, in any of these, so sometimes there's topics that really cross multiple committees. So it's not always just a clear cut, this committee takes this and this committee takes that. So we try and do our best to fit them in where they make sense, but sometimes it does cross multiple committees. Any other discussions or comments? Okay, Sue, will you please take the roll call vote to update Policy 0155 Committees?
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Cory Montiel.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes nine zero. Sue, Bill?
Okay. The next policy is 0166. It's quite simply the agenda that you see every night that we have a board meeting, where it has a list of the committees that are on it. And in this policy, it has been revised to list the correct committees on the agenda with the elimination of the Technology Committee and the Safety and Security Committee. And I so move for Policy 0155 as presented.
Is there a second to that? Saying by Mr. Dietz?
Again, we're just fixing the paperwork so it looks correct. And I think, did we agree to put that ad hoc on the government committee? It's not in the policy.
Yeah.
We're doing that.
So, yeah, just to add some clarity, board members, you know, we get a list of committee assignments. And I had listened to the last Policy Committee meeting, and there was some confusion on committees. So with Sue's help, we tried to clarify those various assignments. And the Government Relations Committee is an ad hoc committee that was created by myself as president. So president has the ability to create ad hoc committees. President also has the ability to assign people to special assignments, as long as I have the responsibility to notify people on that. So hopefully, you found the clarification in the committee assignments. Helpful. Sort of just broke it out into a little bit more detail. Sue, will you please take the roll call vote?
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye.
Cory Montiel.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes nine zero. Bill?
And lastly, Policy 166.1, Consent Agenda. Similarly to the previous one, this is to take the piece of paper and add H to the consent agenda as policies and bylaws, so we have a place to bring those in. And I would move for approval of Policy 0166.1, Consent Agenda.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Saying by Ms. Rady? Discussion? Discussion? It's all kind of packaged together here, kind of a domino effect. Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
Kelly Piasik?
Aye.
Cory Montiel?
Aye.
Anthony Zanobia?
Aye.
Reinichak? Greg Dietz?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes nine zero, Sue. Baumgart?
Thank you for the action items approval. Thank you. And tonight, we have one discussion item on the agenda. This would be a revision to Policy 5630.01, Use of Secclusion and Physical Restraint of Students. The language has been added to define incident, the word incident, and other clarifications for consistency with current legal terminology. Revisions are recommended for such consistency. Additional revisions to the policy were discussed at the last committee meeting and will be further reviewed at the June Policy Committee meeting. This is not here for action. This is here for reading at this point. So if we...
Any suggestions, comments, words of wisdom to bring back to the Policy Committee as they discuss this, continue to discuss this? Okay.
And that will be on our upcoming Policy Committee meeting, which is scheduled for next Tuesday, June 15th at 6:00 PM. And that completes the Policy Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgart. Moving on to our other business, are there any recommendations for future Board of Ed meetings or make suggestions to committee chairs also? Yes, Mr. Zanobia?
Yes, I'd like to recommend that at the next full board meeting that we discuss relevant teaching strategies.
Microphone.
I'm sorry, I'm not, can you hear me? Okay. Let me start over. In light of a presentation that's going to be given at the board workshop at the end of the month with the outgoing and the incoming Directors of Equity, I would like to have on the agenda for the next board meeting a discussion of the equity program and the culturally relevant teaching strategies that have been implemented.
And what we'd probably do, I would suggest that we would send that through the Teaching and Learning Committee. Let's try and do the work in the committee level and have it come up to the full board members. So it will still come up at the full board meeting next month.
Okay.
But it would go through the committee process as opposed to it being under general business.
And then we would meet right before the board meeting?
Right.
So it would be the day before?
Yeah. So we're scheduled for Tuesday, July 6th, and then for the TNL meeting. And then our full board would be the next day. Yeah. Other suggested, suggested items for being agendized? Yes, Ms. Reinichak?
It's not a new one. I was just checking up on the old one about our school dress policy. Was that going to be?
It was.
I can't hear her.
I did not get a chance to watch it.
The dress code?
Did you talk about it in the policy?
The dress code was addressed in policy.
And, Joe, we were going to talk to some...
Yeah, I'll be talking with the high school administration this summer to take a look at the, for the policy language that then transitions over to the student handbooks. And that's how it works. So we'll be in discussions this summer, and we'll have further discussions at the Policy Committee towards the end of the summer, prior to the school year.
All right. Okay, thank you, everybody. We do have a need for closed session tonight, is that correct, on Item D? So I'd be looking for a motion on Item D. Mr. Baumgart?
Excuse me. I move adjourning to executive, executive session per Wisconsin statutes 19.85, parentheses, one, parentheses, C, to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the government body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and in parentheses, compensation for executive administration.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Standing by Mr. Montiel? Will you please take the roll call vote on that, Sue?
Karen Reinichak?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
Kelly Piasik?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Cory Montiel?
Aye.
Anthony Zanobia?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Greg Dietz?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes nine zero. And we may, just so you know, we may reconvene into open session. Kind of depends what happens in closed session. So, thank you, everyone. Okay. Thank you for your patience. We are reconvening into open session to consider compensation for executive administrators. Do I have a motion? Mr. McCaffrey? Oh, you need to turn on your...
Sorry.
I move to approve the compensation for the executive administrators as presented.
Is there a second to that? Standing by Ms. Roddy? Discussion? Okay, Bill, take the roll call vote.
We'll take the roll call vote. Cory Montiel?
Aye.
Aye. Patrick?
Aye.
Karen? Anthony?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Joseph?
Aye. Passes nine zero. Thank you, everybody, for sticking around for the closed session. And we do stand adjourned. Karen?